... she would send out one of them. I can copy these. Um, what's going on? She... the coffee, you know, she... this name? I mean... is it such a... um, okay. Um, but I guess... and if there's any... and like, like, you know...
I've, I've...
vicious. I mean, I'm not asking for special favors, I'm just...
I think we gotta change, like, too. The lawyers gotta...
Well, we could, I don't know. We can, um, just kind of... Okay, thank you. Is it something else? Does it just come out to you? It's time.
I do it. I see, I see. No? Yeah, no, no, I try to, I try to do it now, but, you know, sometimes I do. Like, before I go to the game, when I wake up, or if I wake up in the middle and I have to go to sleep. I mean, it's to the point where I have some peace, so that I don't have to get to bed. Uh... Uh-huh. No? Yeah? Yeah? Yeah. I, I always wonder, 'cause I never had... this one already, this one, if I'm not...
So, we can suspend the rules when you're in that item, so you can allow your other residents to... and if there's layers, it should be... or we... s- s-...
Oh, that's what it is. Oh, my God.
Just want you to put a name, I guess they were... No name, probably. Well, I put the names there. I put that. I think that...
Friend, is this from mine? Who's this me? Hello? Hello?
Six forty-seven, we're back in open session. At this time, can I entertain a motion to move item thirty-two to the top of the agenda? And also to move it into open session?
You've already done that.
Okay. Just making sure.
So then...
Thirty-two. You first have to make decisions on your executive sessions.
Do we do... Okay.
And then you move your items. And you probably wanna...
Could we, could we possibly wait till, um, twenty-five and twenty-six?
Oh, my gosh.
Well, let's do these first, and then I'll go.
Okay. Item number thirty. Application of El Paso Electric Company to implement refund tariff for federal income tax decrease in compliance with document number forty-six eight thirty-one.
Madam Mayor, at this time, I'd like to go ahead and make the motion to suspend El Paso Electric's proposed April fifth, two thousand eighteen, effective date for the final rate as adopted by PURA subsection thirty-six point one zero eight. And also, along with that motion approved, El Paso Electric's request for interim rates effective with billings issued on or after April first, two thousand eighteen, subject to annual reconciliation after final rates are approved.
Second.
René Rodríguez?
Aye.
Cesar Nevaras?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Pérez?
Aye.
Ivan Colombi Alobos?
Yes.
Item number thirty-one. Discussion and action to consult with attorneys and deliberate regarding certain real property located on or near Coker Road.
Madam Mayor, at this time, I'd like to go ahead and delete this item until such time that updates are available.
Second.
René Rodríguez?
Aye.
Cesar Nevaras?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Ivan Colombi Alobos?
Yes.
At this time, can we move item number thirty-two next, and also move it into open session?
Item number twenty-three. Discussion and action to appoint Cynthia Gutierrez to the Ad Hoc Charter Committee.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
René Rodríguez?
Aye.
Cesar Nevaras?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Pérez?
Aye.
Ivan Colombi Alobos?
Yes.
Item number thirty-two. Discussion and action regarding the city manager's complaint involving District Four Representative Ivan Colombi Alobos and the findings from independent investigator.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
You have in front of you the completed report, which was, which was completed and submitted to, for review to the lawyers on February fourteenth. At that time, I was instructed to, um, to hang on to, to the report and, when the item came on the agenda, to go ahead and give each of you a copy. Okay? Well, not a copy, but have you review it. And so, at this point, um, you have the reports in front of you so that you can review.
So, these reports will be given back to staff, correct?
Right, I will, I will collect those at the end.
Oh, thank you.
But since we're doing it in open session, you're kind of waiving the client privilege information, so it will be available to the public.
I, I think council is to make an affirmative motion to do that, to waive that, if you wish to do so, okay, you don't have to, uh, to waive the privilege and make this public if you, if you're gonna do that.
Yeah, that's what I understood, Mayor.
Mr. Rosario?
That's what I understood when I asked our attorney. I said, hey, we can have a discussion, but the documentations itself, for, you know, client privilege information, I mean, we would have to vote on it, correct? That's what you're just saying?
Yes, too.
Okay.
Yeah.
He's recommending. So, Madam Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and make this, uh, this report, this document, not subject to attorney-client privy, uh, considered as attorney-client privileged information.
That's right.
That this report, that the items of this report, the contents, uh, not be subject to the provisions under attorney-client privilege, because we are discussing it.
So, it's available to the public.
Uh, that's, if we're gonna discuss it out in public.
Some will, second.
René Rodríguez?
Aye.
Cesar Nevaras?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Pérez?
Aye.
Ivan Colombi Alobos?
Yes.
Do you want Ms. Marine to read it out loud, or...
I think that would be best, so that the public can hear what we're reading, and that way it'll be more transparent of what we have. They'll have exactly the same thing, if she wants to read it for us, please.
I, I'm gonna, I'm going to need some water. This is, this is long.
Here, you can have mine. This is enough. Ms. Marine, if you would also speak into the mic.
Absolutely. Yes. This, this report was addressed to, uh, our attorney, Bruce Kaler, and it's, and it goes like this. As requested, the following is an investigative summary completed after careful review and consideration of interviews, documentation, and information regarding the memorandum slash complaint received from Adriana Rodarte, City Manager, to the Mayor and City Council members on September first, two thousand seventeen, subject reading as follows. Discussion and action to file a former complaint regarding District Four Representatives' allegations against City Manager, and to discuss several concerns City Manager has regarding District Four Representatives' behavior and actions that raise potential liabilities. The purpose of the, of the process was to investigate the following four issues. One, an allegation of retaliation submitted by the City Manager. Two, whether Ivan Colombi Alobos improperly attempted to use her office to influence the conduct or outcome of an election. Three, whether Ivan Colombi Alobos has improperly communicated with City Staff in an effort to undermine or prevent the execution of a decision made by City Council. Four, whether Ivan Colombi Alobos attempted to intimidate or harass the City Manager by claiming she, the City Manager, did not obtain her employment position based on her qualifications and skill. In investigating the above issues, I interviewed persons involved. They were advised of my role, which includes notification of my independent contractual relationship with your client, my fact-finding purpose, the confidential nature of the process, and that I would be reporting factual results and would not be involved in the outcome. Further, participants were advised to refer future questions, additional information, or concerns regarding the matter directly to me while the investigation remained open. Summary of documentation and interviews. The following persons were interviewed. Adriana Rodarte, City Manager, Miguel Rosas, Parks and Public Works Director, Lisa Wise, the El Paso County Elections Administrator, and Ivan Colombi Alobos, District Four Representative. Numerous documents were provided, including a two-hour recorded meeting held between Ms. Colombi Alobos, Adriana Rodarte, and Jim Martini, Martinez, City Attorney. The meeting was recorded by Ms. Colombi Alobos. Section three point ten of the City Charter entitled "Interference with Administration" states as follows. Neither the City Council nor, nor any of its members shall instruct or request the City Manager or any of the manage, of the City Manager's subordinates to appoint or remove from office or employment any person except with respect to those offices which are to be filled by appointment by the City Council under the provision of this charter. Except for the purpose of inquiry and investigation, and investigation, or as otherwise expressly provided by this charter, the City Council shall interact with the administrative services of the city solely through the City Manager, and shall not give orders to any of the City Manager's subordinates, either publicly or privately, except with the City Manager's specific approval. Additionally, the City Manager has adopted an ordinance entitled "City Council Conduct with City Staff." The policy provides, in part, as follows. Governance of the City of Socorro relies upon cooperation between Mayor and City Council members, on the one hand, and City Manager and City Staff, on the other hand. In order to facilitate this cooperation, eh, cooperation, each City Council member should follow this code of conduct. Number one, treat all staff with respect. City Council members shall communicate in a respectful manner with the City Manager and City Staff. Poor behavior towards City Staff is inappropriate. Number two, positive workplace environment. City Council members shall help maintain a positive workplace environment for all City employees. Number three, limit contact to City Manager, City Attorney, and City Department Heads. City Council members shall direct questions and requests for information regarding any issue relating to the operation of the City of Socorro to the City Manager, City Attorney, or, or Department Heads. The Office of the City Manager should be copied on any request except those to the City Attorney. Requests for follow-up or directions to staff should be made only through the City Manager. Excuse me for a second. Number six, no involvement with administrative functions. City Council members shall not attempt to influence City Staff on the making of appointments, awarding of contracts, selecting of consultants, processing of development applications, or granting of City licenses or permits. Number seven, no directives to City Staff. City Council member, members shall not give instructions or directives to any City employee. Any directives or instructions must be made through the City Manager. Summary of interviews. I met with Ms. Rodarte at, which time she verbally expressed her concerns as detailed in her September first, two thousand seventeen memorandum to the Mayor and City Council members. At the core of Ms. Rodarte's concerns is that Ms. Colombi Alobos potentially creates liability, exposure, and financial cost to the city. She is also concerned with the impact Ms. Colombi Alobos has on Ms. Rodarte's ability to effectively perform as City Manager. And for the record, this says, this reads "I," that's not me, this is the independent investigator. During my interview with Mr. Rosas, he too was concerned with Ms. Colombi Alobos's interaction with him as a member of City Staff. He recalled a, a particular telephone call he received from her. In that conversation, Mr. Rosas said Ms. Colombi Alobos was asking what could be done to bring back the item to award a bid to a different bidder. He said that would have been a different action than the one decided on by City Council and voted on in a board meeting. In general terms, the issue involved a bid that was awarded to a bidder that was not the lowest. Mr. Rosas reported the phone call to Ms. Rodarte because he believed the request and call by Ms. Colombi Alobos was inappropriate and not within protocol and process. He told Ms. Colombi, he told Ms. Colombi Alobos she should call Ms. Rodarte with that request. Mr. Rosas recalled that was not the first time Ms. Colombi Alobos had called him about issues on which he believed she should have called Ms. Rodarte instead of him. In a meeting with Lisa Wise with the Elections Department, with the El Paso Elections Department, she was responsible for receiving and investigating the complaints regarding violations and misconduct during the election. While Ms. Wise advised me she could not share her investigation details, she stressed that the matter was closed and no, no further action would be taken. The following are highlights of the meeting with Ms. Colombi Alobos. She denies engaging in any retaliatory behavior or taking any retaliatory action against Ms. Rodarte. She says she respects the work Ms. Rodarte has done up to now as City Manager. However, while she makes the statements, she is also critical of numerous actions Ms. Rodarte has taken in her capacity as City Manager. As one example, Ms. Rodarte reporting the complaints received during the election time and forwarding to the El Paso Elections Department personnel. There are numerous examples Ms. Colombi Alobos expressed during our meeting, which have been referred to in the me, in the emails reviewed as part of this investigative process. The fact that Ms. Colombi Alobos states that she respects Ms. Rodarte's work as City Manager, but is critical of her actions is misaligned. She believes she has a right to question Ms. Rodarte because asking questions is how she states she is going to best learn and represent her constituency. In listening to the recorded meeting and reviewing email correspondence, Ms. Colombi Alobos is clearly questioning and not satisfied with Ms. Rodarte's responses. I asked Ms. Colombi Alobos to address her derogatory statements made against Ms. Rodarte during the recorded meeting. Ms. Colombi Alobos said she felt that, that that matter was closed because she was not even aware she made the comments until she listened to the recording, and once she did, she apologized in a public manner in front of Council. Ms. Colombi Alobos stressed she was running late for her meeting with Ms. Rodarte and Mr. Martinez, and was very emotional due to some personal matters, which was likely why she made those comments against Ms. Rodarte, and why the meeting felt adversarial to Ms. Rodarte. Ms. Colombi Alobos strongly believes she has a right to ask questions, and does not view those questions as anything other than keeping herself informed in her role as District Four Representative. Findings. In conclusion, the investigation revealed the following in response to the questions. One, an allegation of retaliation submitted by the City Manager. Ms. Colombi Alobos's actions are more bullying than retaliatory. The actions, line of questioning, tone, and stance that she took towards Ms. Rodarte, most especially during the August sixteen, two thousand seventeen meeting, can be categorized as wanting to intimidate rather than take retribution. In fact, Ms. Colombi Alobos alone cannot take any retaliatory action against Ms. Rodarte in her capacity as City Manager, since Ms. Rodarte reports to the entire City Council, and any action taken towards Ms. Rodarte must be agreed upon by the majority. Number two, whether Ivan Colombi Alobos improperly attempted to use her office to influence or, or the conduct or outcome of an election. This is a matter for the El Paso Elections Department to determine. It is my understanding from my meeting with Ms. Wise that they received the complaint and in line with the process have closed the complaint without further action necessary. For a more detailed finding, the matter must be addressed directly by the City of Socorro with the El Paso Elections Department. Number three, whether Ivan Colombi Alobos has improperly communicated with City Staff in an effort to undermine or prevent the execution of a decision made by City Council. Ms. Colombi Alobos denies any improper communication with City Staff. However, Mr. Rosas says, he said he has received a call from Ms. Colombi Alobos requesting he bring back an item which had already been voted on to City Council. While Ms. Colombi Alobos denies improper communication, Mr. Rosas' statements indicate that she improperly communicated with City Staff. Number four, whether Ivan Colombi Alobos has attempted to intimidate or harass the City Manager by claiming she, the City Manager, did not obtain her employment position based on her qualifications and skill. Ms. Colombi Alobos's statements made during the recorded meeting between Ms. Rodarte and Mr. Martinez substantiate Ms. Rodarte's allegations of harassment and intimidation. Ms. Colombi Alobos's tone is accusatory, and in fact, when I met with Ms. Colombi Alobos, she still had the same questions regarding Ms. Rodarte's behavior, in spite of having received answers to her questions directly from Mr. Martinez and Ms. Rodarte during the meeting. Ms. Colombi Alobos refuses to accept the answers or channel her questions through the board. Her approach is bullying and not conducive to open two-way communication between her and Ms. Rodarte. Given those finding, findings, and based on section three point ten of the City Charter entitled "Interference with Administration," I further find that there are violations specifically as they regard to number one, treat all staff with respect. Ms. Colombi Alobos, in her words, tone, and stance demonstrate, demonstrated disrespect toward Ms. Rodarte, at the very least on the occasion of the recorded meeting, a meeting which Ms. Colombi Alobos herself recorded, but as reported by Ms. Rodarte in their usual interaction. While Ms. Colombi Alobos apologized, the fact remains that the incident occurred, and it is in violation of the City Charter. Ms. Colombi Alobos also violated the City Charter when she communicated with Mr. Rosas by communicating directly with staff on matters that should have been addressed by the board or should have been taken to the City Manager. Her actions are, are perceived as involving herself in administrative functions, potentially directing City Staff, disrespecting the City Manager, and creating an uncomfortable work situation for City Staff, which is clearly not conducive to a positive work environment, and in violation of the above-mentioned City Charter. This narrative serves as a summary of my investigation. If you, if you would like more detailed information regarding the extensive interviews conducted and review, and review of documents regarding the issues, please let me know, and I will provide. Thank you sincerely, Norah C. Ellis. Ms. Marine? Mayor, we have speakers? The speakers, the speakers first.
Jesse Montelongo?
Thank you for, uh, how long do I have?
A minute and a half, sir.
A minute and a half, okay, I'll make this short. Well, I'm, uh, I'm very disappointed in what's been going on. I just talked about, you know, defamation of character. However, uh, you know, you have to do the right thing, and sometimes it's really hard. I've had to, I've, I've had to fire someone that was a personal friend and that I hired, and I had to do it because it was the right thing to do. I can't tell you all how to do your job, but I just wish, and I pray for all of you, that one day, one day, that everybody there's gonna work together as a team, and help me help you guys, because we need you guys, we need you guys. But we don't want no more fighting. The fight's out here. The fight's outside, not in here. That, and, uh, she, she, she does, she, I, I will say this for Ms., for District Four Rep. Thank you for helping me try to clear up some of the problems at District Four, the concrete over the manholes, the, you know, the potholes, the crime watch program. I thank you from the bottom of my heart, but I have no control over what else is going on. Uh, this was, to me, this was a total surprise, but I personally don't have nothing against you, ma'am, or nothing against anybody here in the city. I'm just tired of our name being drug through the mud, okay? We're good people here, and we have good people here, and we need, I'm sorry, we need to prove ourselves again, and thank you, that's all I gotta say.
Daniel Hernández?
Good afternoon. Uh, as I see that Ms. Ivan Colombi Alobos is her first term in council, so maybe she's, she was not aware of the rules and regulations. Maybe she didn't know. What I do know, she was asking questions that the constituents were asking her. Maybe, you know, it was simple enough, instead of going through the City Manager, just calling Mr. Rosas, eh, Mr. Rosas? She's not asking them to change or to change the bidder. She just saw, uh, if we can get something done for cheaper, save some money. Her question was, why did they give the contract to so-and-so if someone could do it cheaper? We're trying to work with the budget, always working with the budget. Now, of course, we can always go back to some other, like you said, this was an investigation, but we can always go back. She acted like what, a taxpayer, like a mother, like a rep for? She was only asking questions that we, the constituents, always ask, can we do it cheaper? We're always working with the budget, we are. This is her first term. If she was here for two or three terms and she's doing it, then yes. Well, no one sits in that chair knowing your job and all regulations, do you now? You guys know. She didn't break any rules. She thought it was more easier, you know, contacting them out straight ahead, instead of going through the letters. Now she knows. Just think that, we're all humans who all make mistakes. Thank you.
Sergio Jaime?
What kind of tristeza me da, mi, de que estén haciendo estas cosas con gente que de veras es útil para la ciudad de Socorro, y no lleven una buena investigación como debe de ser. Por qué a la gente que de veras quiere ayudar a los, a la gente de Socorro, los perjudican? Cuando tenemos pruebas de quienes sí hacen todos sus errores, aquí los tienen. ¿Qué les gusta a ustedes la corrupción? ¿A eso están sentados ahí? A eso tenemos un city manager sin experiencia que la puso el señor René y Ruiz, el ex-alcalde, sin ninguna experiencia, señores. Eso tomenlo en cuenta. Eh? El señor René todo el tiempo saca la cara por él en las television o en los medios.
Mr. Jaime, you can only talk about this issue.
Perdón?
No más puede hablar sobre el número treinta y dos.
Bueno, el, yo, yo veo que es injusto lo que están haciendo con la señora Ivonne, porque nosotros la pusimos precisamente para eso, pa' que ayudara a la ciudadanía, no pa' que la estén atacando. Hay otras personas que deben de atacar, y no las atacan. Y usted, si es una abogada por el buen juez, empieza, por su casa empieza. Y si no hay...
Mr. Jaime, your time is up.
Thank you.
Lorenza Friday?
All I have to say is, is that due process wasn't followed, and I can guarantee you that I have an email that proves the allegations that Mrs. Ivan claimed about the hiring of the City Manager. All you have to do is go look at the emails from your previous mayor, and I can produce that email for you, because our chief financial officer showed me the information. And if anybody's been doing with the staff, I can say. Because why? You have not been properly processed through the system. Now, according to the Charter, she has a privilege, a privilege that has to be given to her by the City Attorney, which I see she wasn't given to her. She was only asking questions that we, the constituents, always ask, can we do it cheaper? We're always working with the budget, we are. This is her first term. If she was here for two or three terms and she's doing it, then yes, but no one sits in that chair knowing your job and all regulations, do you now? You guys know. She didn't break any rules. She thought it was more easier, you know, contacting them out straight ahead instead of going through the letters. Now she knows. Just think that, we're all humans who all make mistakes. Thank you.
Sergio Jaime?
What kind of sadness does it give me that they are doing these things with people who in fact are useful to the city of Socorro and not having a good investigation as it should be? Why do people who in fact want to help the city of Socorro get hurt? When we have evidence of people who have made all their mistakes, they are here. What do you like about them? Corruption? Are there those sitting there? Are we experiencing a city manager who doesn't have experience like Mr. René and Ruiz, the ex-alyme? Without any experience, señores. Those take into account. Eh? Mr. René always comes out of the news on the television, on the media.
Mr. Jaime, you can only talk about this issue.
Perdón?
I can only talk about the number 32.
Bueno. Yo veo que es injusto lo que están haciendo con la señora Iván. Porque nosotros la pusimos precisamente para eso, para que ayudara a la ciudadanía, no para que la estén atacando. Hay otras personas que deben de atacar y no las atacan. Y usted, si es una abogada por el buen juez, empieza, por su casa empieza. And if no hay...
Mr. Jaime, your time is up. Lorenza Friday?
All I have to say is, is that due process wasn't followed and I can guarantee you that I have an email that proves the allegations that Mrs. Iván claimed about the hiring of the city manager. All you have to do is go look at the emails from your previous mayor and I can produce that email for you because our chief financial officer showed me the information. And if anybody's been doing with the staff, I can say, because why? You have not been properly processed through the system. Now, according to the charter, she has a privilege, a privilege that has to be given to her by the city attorney, which I see she wasn't given to her by the action that I see this evening. As a previous interim manager, city manager, I gave each of the council members what the responsibilities were and the roles and I don't believe that that was ever given to Mrs. Villalobos and I believe that it was not a fair investigation and I request another investigation because of the allegations she made, which are true. The way the city manager was hired and the councilmen at large knows what I'm talking about and knows that I can prove this with factual information. Thank you.
Mayor, those were our honor speakers. Ms. Villalobos? Mr. Rodriguez?
Oh my God. I like it when people come up here and say they have proof, but never do when the issue is up. How funny and ironic it is when somebody has a personal vendetta against the city and the media comes and talks to those people who have a personal vested interest in trying to fight against the city. And we all listen to all of those chismes, like I said. We need to stop that, we need to stop fighting and bickering with each other. I am going to say this, Ms. Villalobos, you were wrong from what happened. I'm going to say that, but I'm also going to say that I was afforded, I was afforded by the state of Texas a second opportunity. We should afford that to her too. I understand that this was eight months ago. Haven't you gone to TML conferences since then? I will say this, when I came in here, I did not know, but this gentleman came up here and said, we don't know when we come in here, what are the rules, what are the regulations, what are the policies? We don't. We're thrown into this mix and we have to find the hard way. I understand that Ms. Villalobos is very passionate for her district. I know that, you know, she stepped her boundaries, because she doesn't know better, but I guarantee you, she's gone to these conferences, she's already answered. I've been in those conferences with her and when we're talking on issues like being transparent and what you can and can't do, she goes and talks to the speakers right after. I understand, I understand and I hope that you have learned what not to do moving forward because it's something that I will say. I've talked to staff too. I have been, not reprimanded, but I have been called to it and say, hey, you can't do that because I didn't know better. All I'm saying is, Ms. Villalobos, you were wrong. I want to stress that out. You were wrong because for me, you haven't gone to conferences until recently and I want to say that I think that this council should understand that we all were in that predicament one way or another and we need to say, hey, that's why I always stress that it's very important for us to go to these trainings because they tell you what we have to do. They tell you exactly what are our boundaries, okay? We should stop fighting with each other because that's all it is. Mr. Montelongo has always said, hey, one team, one fight, but we don't do that because we bring agenda items to bicker and fight against each other and instead of uniting us, we're dividing ourselves. And this is not the Trump administration, this is Socorro. We should be better, we should be better. Now that this comes to light, that should give us and our constituency and anybody who wants to come into council to be aware of what we do wrong so that we won't, you know, step over our boundaries. I would just like to say, Ms. Villalobos, I get it, you were wrong, you apologized and I hope you apologized, but it's as you did. One of the things that I will say is, let's just move on. I think that it's time, I think that we know where you went wrong, listening to other people giving you bad information and of course, we have to listen to our constituency. And sometimes there are the hard, difficult questions to answer. You know, it's so difficult for people to come up to this podium and say, oh, you know what I'm talking about, with no proof. If there was proof, believe me, if I was pointing the finger, I'd be up there saying, this is the proof. We need to stop with the chismes one more time, we need to move on. Thank you.
Ms. Villalobos? Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez, I really appreciate that. Not too long ago, Mr. Rodriguez and I did not get along. There was a meeting, a lot of you were there and he apologized. He got up and he apologized and I accepted his apology. Since that day, I am not your friend, I'm not your enemy, I'm here to do a job and you're here to do a job and we're not buddies, there's no buddy system here. I do want to address some of the items here. Yes, I am new, but not ignorant. What I was accused of is not fair because I did not do those things. There's only, this report is one-sided, very one-sided. Of course, I didn't pay for it, the city did. Of course, I was not investigating on every item that was presented as myself doing wrong. I was asked maybe five or six questions and then the rest of the time I was being counseled. And she did ask, what were your feelings then and what are your feelings now? Then I told her I was frustrated. On one hand, I have constituents that I have to answer to and I'm not getting the answers and I think there's a gentleman here, is one of them that came up here, I'm not lying, he wasn't getting his answers because I wasn't getting my answers. But he's not the only one, there's so many out there. Maybe you guys didn't know this, I don't, there's a lot of things I just don't disclose, I just don't say. I don't say it, maybe I should, but I'm the one here, always trying to do the right thing, always. I do want to say, as God is my witness, I speak from the heart. I got into, I ran as a District 4 representative because Mr. Duran here was a friend of my husband's and soon became a friend of mine. I'm also a realtor and that day we were talking, my husband was there doing some business with Mr. Duran. And we were talking about real estate, which is something that I do and I told him that I wished more developers would come into Socorro. That was about four years ago. And he says, why don't you do something about it? And I said, what can I do about it? He says, run. I don't know how to run. He says, I'll help you. Come to some meetings with me. And I came to these meetings just like you guys are sitting here. And I didn't like what I saw here and no wonder, I didn't like what was outside in That was the end of that conversation. One day he calls me and he says, Iván, you ready to run? And I said, yes. That was two years and a half after that conversation. He says, well, I have a packet for you, come to my shop, come and get it, I have a CD for you. I went and picked it up and he told me, now you have to do this, this and this. A day later, I get a call from Mrs. Friday. I had met her at one of the meetings when Mr. Duran didn't come with me and I saw her up here fighting, fighting for the citizens of Socorro. And I said to her outside, I said, ma'am, I like what you said up there, but why are you a lone wolf? Why are you up there by yourself? And she said, sweetheart, I'm not here alone, I have people behind me. Today, I spoke for them, they could not be here. I like what you said. She says, would you like to join us? And I said, maybe. Give me your number. I gave her my number. I didn't know the bickering or the fighting, I didn't know any of that. All I knew is that I wanted to run for the city and I wanted to do the best for the city and I wanted to change the city. So I ran, Mrs. Friday, help me, Mr. Duran helped me a little bit. I'm not going to say much about the relationship they have, but that's not me and I told them both, I will not be anybody's puppet. We're going to run a clean campaign and we're going to do it the right way. Of course, I was met with a lot of negativity and thank God, I won with a large margin, but I didn't get the 51%. This is important for you guys to know, I didn't get the 51%, but yet I was sworn in. Of course, I didn't know about the 51%. Nobody knew about the 51%. Nobody knew that we had to have runoff elections. When I started as a council, I was met with nothing but negativity. My friend, Mr. Roarte, helped me tremendously. I have to give credit where credit is due. She helped me tremendously, but she also said, Ms. Colombia Lobos, if you have any questions, please call Mr. Daniel, he can answer them for you. So when this report says that I called Mr. Rosas, I'm sorry, Mr. Rosas, it was with her permission. Now, I have to stress, I have to stress, I called him several times. Not once did he say anything to me, that he should not be speaking to me directly and neither did she, neither did the city manager. She didn't call me to say, Ms. Colombia Lobos, you need to direct everything to me. She did not. I didn't think I was doing anything correct, I had her permission and her blessing. When I called Mr. Rosas on that one instant that's here on this report, it's funny how people twist and turn everything. Why don't we just say, when you change one word, it makes a whole, a big difference. My conversation was with, when I called him, Mr. Rosas, I have a question for you. I had a constituent call me, that constituent is here, calling me about the big ticket item that we approved last night. His question was, why are we, why did we need such a big vehicle and how expensive it, why didn't we go with a lesser one? And I asked him, this person wants, if this person finds something better, do you think we can bring this item back? I should have asked for knowledge purpose, just to know, because I didn't know, is this something that can, have you seen this come back? That's what I wanted to know. That's what I always wanted to know. But ladies and gentlemen, when it says here that I told Mrs. Roarte that she didn't get her job, I know how she got her job. She works hard, she's smart, she's witty, she's quick, she knows exactly how and where and why. There's no, let me get back to you, never, until that meeting we had and I'll explain that to you. In that, my words, my words, my words were cut, okay? If you listen to the video, we were talking about how I'm not supposed to be asking questions to the attorney because it costs money. And my question to her, my comment to her was, Mr. Roarte, I'm sure you didn't come into this position knowing at all, I'm sure you were asking questions as you were learning and growing. But when you cut off the front and the back, it sure sounds bad and that wasn't true. The video's out there, I'm not lying, the video is out there. Now, I'm the first one to say that I will never cause any grief to the city, any money. In fact, me, myself, I paid for my own signs to have a city town, my first town hall meeting, April 1st of 2017, I paid $500 out of my own pocket and put them out there, put the signs out there. My husband will tell you, because he's the one that put them. Out of my own money, I'm not trying to cause the city money, I'm trying to be the best councilwoman that I can be up here for you guys because we've all been wrong, we've all been there, I'm a constituent too, been here 16 years, we've all been wrong. So I thought I'd be super woman up here, instead I was met with so much negativity. And then recently, at one meeting, outside, I was told, the problems that you are being accused of, did your city attorney ever call you in and talk to you about them? No. Did your city manager ever talk to you about them? No. They were all thrown into a report and all of a sudden I'm being investigated. Not once did they say, Ms. Colombia Lobos, we need to have a meeting. I believe something happened. Nobody asked me what I talked to Mr. Rosas about. I'm not, I could deny it and say, no, I didn't talk to him. Where's the phone calls? Show me the proof. No, I did talk to him and yes, there was a conversation. I had her blessing, many times she said, Ms. Colombia Lobos, you know, we could meet, come in, we can meet, we can have a conversation. She's been up here at the podium and she said that, it's recorded and so has the attorney. The attorney told me many times I could come and talk to him. So I had a list of all you constituents not getting the answers needed, so I told her I need to meet with you and with the attorney. Because Section 4.03, City Attorney, B, the duties of a city attorney shall be to serve as legal advice to the city council, city manager, to all office department and agencies. If I, the minute they felt I was doing something wrong, why didn't they call me in and tell me, wait a minute, I know you're new, let's sit down, let's talk about it. Not once, I was thrown into an investigation immediately. There's no write-ups, there's no documentation of any sort, at least not to me. Now, the reason I, the reason I asked for September, on September 1st to meet was because I had all these questions and I was, there was an election, a very nasty election, where I was accused of many wrongdoing, myself, another council person and the person running. We were accused of many, many things, but none of those things were incorrect. The fact that three judges wrote two letters and sent it to the city manager instead of their employer complaining about us. The complaints were, we came into the bathroom. The other complaint, city, Iván Colombia Lobos excluding anybody else, came in into the building. I came into the building because we had a meeting, we had a council meeting. The election closed at seven that day. The meeting was across and it was, I believe, at six. But nobody asked me this, nobody's asked me, why were you here? We're allowed to come to the bathroom, we're allowed to, I'm allowed to perform my duties, but in that letter, nobody said she was propagandizing, she had flyers, she was talking to constituents. The other, the other item on there, the other time I came in was I had a constituent and we were going to court. So I requested for a judge to chaperone me because I did not want to get, I didn't want anybody thinking that I was doing something incorrect. So I asked for a judge to chaperone me and he did, he chaperoned me, he saw nothing wrong. He didn't write a letter and say, Ms. Colombia Lobos did something incorrectly. He didn't. It was three judges that I didn't speak to. So I had a, I had a meeting with Lisa Wise from the Elections Department, that meeting was recorded and where she profusely apologized for her judges, but she said, they're appoint, they're, they're not employees, I believe, that they're not employees, but they do work for them. And she profusely apologized and she says, Ms. Colombia Lobos, there is no investigation on you. I don't know who told you that we're conducting an investigation, but there is no investigation. I also spoke to Tony Rivera, which is, I believe, his, her assistant and he said the same thing. We did nothing wrong. As a matter of fact, let me give you an example. The example was, what floor are we on? Third floor. Did you know city council is here on third floor? No, ma'am, I did not. This is in El Paso. No, ma'am, I did not. No, ma'am, I did not. This isn't, this is in El Paso. No, ma'am, I did not. Yes, they're here, and they are, they're in here all the time. And our elections, our election poll is just down, just in front of our door. They're allowed to come in and go out, as long as they're not wearing any propaganda, as long as they're not passing out flyers, they're, they're allowed to come in and out. It's a public place. They can come in and out. Perhaps it wasn't the right, I didn't approach it the right way, but because she and I, Ms. Rodarte and I, had had a very good relationship up to that date, I thought, I can, you know, it's time. I, I had talked to T M L, I had told them my concerns. T M L said, in front of everybody, they said, ma'am, I asked the question in front of everybody, you need to get your city attorney and your, your, um, your city manager together and ask these questions. Okay, so I did. I emailed her, I asked her, we set up a time. I was running late, my car broke down. I did everything in my power to make it on time. I was a little late. And I was going through a personal issue, heavy personal issue. But I still made it to that meeting, because I know that it would have cost money if Mr., Mr., if our attorney had to come and leave. So I wanted, I didn't want to cause any more money for the future. I mean, cause any more money to the city. So I sat down, and I asked him, why wasn't I informed about these letters? Why did I have to hear it? And, I'm sorry, why, why weren't we informed, you know, beforehand of the letters? The first thing that comes out of Mrs. Rodarte's, uh, what she said first was, Ms. Colombia Lobos, we didn't know what to do. And she looked at attorney, right? We didn't know what to do. It's on, it's in the recording. I, I don't have to make this stuff up. And he said, yeah, yeah, we didn't know what to do. And I said, if you didn't know what to do, why didn't you bring it to council? Why is it not coming to council? And she said, well, I'm not gonna hide any, or I'm not gonna, something about hide anything for, or cover for anybody, something like that, she said. I wasn't asking her, that wasn't my question. My question was, why didn't you bring it to council? Maybe council, between council and everybody, we would have avoided this whole issue. That's my thinking. Then I was advised that I could not speak about this item, because I was being investigated. And see, I was there to let them know. That was my, my, my second, uh, item on my, on my sheet, to let them know that I have spoken to the, um, Elections Department, and that there was no investigation. There was not going to be an investigation. And I needed at that time counsel, and he'd ref, I don't know if he refused, he just said he couldn't talk to me. But he, he's my city attorney. If I was doing anything wrong, why not ask me to come in and talk about it? Why bring it out in the public like this? Why? I, I'm gonna tell you something. Ms. Rodarte is very busy. She is so busy that after that incident, I changed my tone. I changed the way I, I asked things. I changed, not because I felt like I did something wrong, but because maybe we could communicate better. So what I did is I brought to the agenda, I'm sorry, uh, the new people weren't here, but I brought to the agenda, Mr. Perez could remember, that if we could have a, um, itemized sheet, maybe once a, a month, a week, giving us updates on all our, our, um, our requests, because I was getting bombarded with the, with the, uh, constituents. And I'm not lying. One of them just said, you know, I had to go directly down there and get the information, why can't you get it faster? I have an email, a text message on that. She was very mad. She don't, she doesn't even speak to me. But it wasn't me. I was waiting and waiting, and I requested and asked. So what we decided is what, that, that there was going to be a report. That was over six months ago. We still don't have that report. And two months ago, Ms. Rodarte told me that report would come in. Ladies and gentlemen, I am not a bad person. I'm a very good person. I'm a very giving person. I, many of you, you know that I've been at your house till midnight, because you have concerns. I have videos where I've taken, you know, the concern, I've sent, I forward them to, to Mrs. Rodarte. What I'm trying to say here is that no, nobody's perfect. Ms. Rodarte is very busy, and I, I completely understand. But I believe the lack of backup is what reflects here today. And, and that report is, is so wrong. It is so wrong. I didn't do any of those things. You have to listen to, I mean, you have to, you can't just put pieces of, of the story, because then it changes the meaning and the, and the, the, the way it works, the way it is. I will tell you, in that meeting, at the end, yes, I was a little upset. But I wasn't the only one. It started with Mrs. Rodarte. Her, um, what is it, um, her, you, you couldn't see her, but her demeanor was, she was, um, her eyes were just going back and forth. She was very upset. And I asked her why she was so upset, and she said, because not, what is it, uh? She insulted me. I can't remember. It's in the recording. It doesn't matter. It doesn't matter, right? I didn't take it that way, but it was an insult. And I'm not, I, I'm just here trying to do the best that I can. I really am. Nobody's perfect. I'm not perfect. I don't claim to be perfect. But what I did do is I listened, and I turned it around. If Renan and I can turn it around, we can all turn it around.
I agree.
I could, I could say so many things, but I'll end with this. As God is my witness, I speak from the heart. Ivan Colombia Lobos, District Four Representative for the City of Socorro, is for the people, with the people, and by the people. Thank you.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Now that everything's open, I think we could move forward. You know, we need to stop the bickering one more time. You know, I understand that some of us, a, and when I say some of us, you need to understand that I'm including myself. Have stepped the boundaries, have stepped the lines, okay? I've said it once, and I'll say it again. I was offered the upper, the second chance. Okay? We're not perfect. We're not perfect. I understand, you know, that she was eager. I understand. If she stepped the line, hey, you already heard her. I've changed. She's got a T M L. She knows better now, because ignorance is not an excuse. But we start as an ignorant person, because we don't know policies and procedures. Because nobody sits us down and gives us all of that. We have to do it, and they say, hey, here you go, get to it. So what I'm saying is, for the people and the gentlemen that come up here and said, hay que atacar, paren de atacar, okay? That means in English is that, let's stop attacking her, and let's attack somebody else. No, we should stop attacking people, period. And that's where we need to stop. We need to stop attacking each other, work with each other. We've had differences of opinion. We've yelled at each other. I've always said it, yes. Yes, I, I yelled at her once. We were, we were, because it was a passionate and heated argument. You know, it takes the best of us. But nevertheless, we sat down, we, I apologized, she apologized, and we're working together. Because that ultimately, the goal is one team, one vision, and to move the city forward. I think that this, we should learn from our mistakes and move on. All I'm saying is, if this ever happens again, then we should at least say, hey, then we'll bring it back. But once we already know, and we already know that people have changed, I think we should just move on. Because I hate the fact that we're berating her, you know, in public. This is something that I believe that, you know, we should say, hey, you messed up, let's talk about it. Why do we have to ber, berate council people in public? I understand she, she must have, you know, stepped over the line, like I said. But I've seen that she has tried to change her ways. She's gone to conferences so that she can be better prepared and better, and have a better understanding of the rules and procedures. I will say it one more time. Maybe you did, maybe you didn't do it with, with the, with bad intention. I don't know. But we understand, Ms. Colombia Lobos, that you did not know better. Like I said, ignorance is not an excuse. But you already moved on. I saw it, I've seen it with my own eyes. We should just move on, people. We should just move on. We need to stop fighting with each other. We need to unify our council. Okay? And I'm talking to all of us. We need to unify our council. Stop bickering and stop putting stuff against each other. Because if we're divided, we'll never get the city straight. So please, people, please. Enough is enough. We already know, we should know better, and let's move on. And let's move on. Please.
Mr. Perez?
Um, I, I agree with Mr. Rodriguez and Ms. Colombia Lobos. What I will say though, is that I heard about three phrases today regarding this issue. Due process, no one is perfect, we all make mistakes, right? And so, in the investigations that I've witnessed from this council that we've generated, I have always asked that we treat the person being investigated with dignity and respect, always. And I think that, uh, we haven't always afforded that. Depending on the issue, depending on what side you were on, we didn't. And so I think that those three phrases that I heard tonight, and that were espoused by a lot of those individuals making waves and, and going to the media, I think that we all have a lesson to learn here, that if we're human, we make mistakes. And we all, and you can do it to one of two things, either wallow in your mistake or learn from it. And I would like for us to get past this and not wallow in it and go forward. Um, will we make mistakes again? Absolutely. I mean, that, that's a consequence of being human. But it's not going to be for, because we're trying to get at each other, or we all, and I, and I agree with you. I think that we, we all serve with the best intentions, and we all serve to move the city forward. We will all, and, and I'll be the first one to admit it. I'd be ten pounds lighter if I didn't have such a thick skin and, and, you know, deflect some of the things that are said about me. Which is fine. Everyone has, has the, uh, they're entitled, they're entitled to their opinion. Nonetheless, I think that at this point, with all issues that we're dealing with, I think that we owe the individuals who are in the spotlight or under the microscope in this case, be given the dignity that they deserve. It comes from, whether it's council members or staff members, and I think they also deserve the dignity. That's all I need to say. Thank you.
Well said. Well said.
Do we have any motions?
Madam Mayor, at this time, I'd like to go ahead and, um, have this report archived appropriately. And if it's okay with council, let's just move on.
Second.
Renan Rodriguez?
Aye.
Cesar Navarez?
Yes.
Ralph Turan?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
Ivan Colombia Lobos?
Yes.
Item number seventeen, discussion and action on the final plat approval for Vista Bonita Estate Subdivision Unit One, being a portion of tract five, block twenty-four, San Elisario Grant.
Mayor, we have some speakers.
Madam Mayor, may I go ahead and make a motion to approve, so we can continue the discussion?
Second.
Pardon me? We're on item seventeen, I'm sorry. If, if council does not mind, I am going to remove myself from this item, and, and please call me back in. Thank you.
Because it's her subdivision. Yes. It's her, it's her subdivision.
Ladies and gentlemen, uh, good evening. Uh, first case that I have for y'all tonight is to propose the final plat approval for what is the Vista Bonita, Vista Bonita Estate Subdivision Unit One. Uh, it is a portion of adjacent tract five, block twenty-four, of the San Elisario Grant. Uh, subject property is located adjacent to the southeast boundary of the City of Socorro within the extraterritorial jurisdiction. So it is outside of the city limits within the E T J. Uh, it is, uh, just east of the Rancho Miraval Estate Subdivision. Uh, the proposed, uh, this proposed final plat is just the first phase, the first portion of the originally approved preliminary plat for Vista Bonita. This, uh, final plat itself encompasses, uh, roughly about sixty-nine acres in size. Uh, city council did approve the original Vista Bonita Estates preliminary plat back in January fourth, two thousand and eighteen. Uh, all comments related to that preliminary plat have been resolved by the engineer and the applicant. Uh, uh, for, all comments, including staff and city engineers' comments, excuse me. Uh, the proposed subdivision does have access through two ways off of, uh, Burbidge Road, towards Alameda, Alameda, and, uh, towards the, uh, other subdivision further east of this, uh, final plat, uh, also in the E T J for access off of North Loop. So that's our beginning access from the south and the north for this proposed, uh, uh, area. Excuse me. The proposed final plat does, uh, consists of approximately two hundred, uh, single-family residential lots with asphalt pavement, uh, streets, sanitary sewer, concrete sidewalks, uh, water lines, street lights, and street sanitization. Uh, the proposed design, uh, for this subdivision does not include a public park or a public ponding, uh, this area. All lots will meet the minimum lot size requirement for on-lot ponding. That is how, uh, ponding will be taken care of for this. Plan and zoning commission, uh, did review this proposed final plat and did recommend approval, uh, with the condition that all comments from staff and city engineer be resolved prior to the filing of the plat. Uh, and the planning and zoning department did also recommend approval, uh, with that same condition, that all comments from staff and city engineer be resolved, uh, prior to the filing and, uh, finalizing of this plat. The applicant is here, uh, and his engineer is here as well, if you have any questions for them, and I stand for questions.
Mayor, I'm sorry. Mr. Rodarte?
Uh, just a quick question. Were the concerns of the constituents addressed? We had had several meetings, and they had requested a stubout on farther out, not to connect to Tres Caballos.
Um, Ms. Rodarte, that's actually in, uh, what's, what's phase four of this, uh, subdivision. This is just the first phase, the one furthest east, so it does not affect Rancho Miraval at all. Uh, but at that, with that preliminary plat approval, they did realign the streets. Um, they originally had, uh, the road continuation that was in Rancho Miraval coming into the subdivision that was moved over further north, uh, so that-
And that is not what we're approving tonight?
Correct. That is not what we're looking at tonight, ma'am.
Mr. Rodriguez?
I was, I was gonna, uh, I was gonna ask the exact same thing. So, because we did, we did, we did have several meetings with, with the developers, the homeowner, the residents from Rancho Miraval, uh, our staff was here, you know, we were duking it out many times, and then we came to an agreement where everybody was satisfied, and that's what we want. And I thought that they're approving it, but we're only approving the first phase, which is okay. But we, they still know that all of the stuff that everybody agreed upon is still gonna be, be, be accomplished. So.
Mr. Perez?
Okay, but in order, I understand that this is going in phases. And I know that we're not at the phase where the, where the homeowners are, are concerned with. Nonetheless, I think that it would be prudent on our part to have that in writing, uh, the, what the, what the homeowners are requesting, because what we're doing now is just on paper. Or rather, the, you know, we're, we're approving the preliminary, the plats, we're approving the first phase. And, and I'm not questioning the, the legitimacy or the intentions of the developer. But it's, it, we won't be here, and that- But it's, it, we won't be here, and that has been made, that has been, you know, made profoundly, uh, aware or profoundly demonstrated to you. So then, I think that it would be incumbent for us to somehow have that in writing so that in the event that it does, at the point where it, we're at that phase, that a street wasn't moved over, or a stubout wasn't moved over, uh, by accident. And accidents do happen, misinterpretations of, of, of plans happen, I understand that. It happened to my, in my house. So I think that if that would be something that is amenable to the homeowners, that, that as a, as a condition of this, of this approval, that we have that specific statement stating the, the...
Agreement.
The agreement that the homeowners and the developer, uh, agreed upon.
And the city.
And the city, exactly.
I agree.
After the preliminary, they only have twelve months to come up with a final, correct?
That is correct. They have a year, uh, essentially after a year, the preliminary plat is, uh...
They have to go through the whole process again?
Correct.
And I understand that. But the thing is that, that if we're, if we're doing this in phases, then this is the overarching appro, I mean, we're having an overarching approval of, of the plat. So I think that there is some value and some merit in having some kind of, uh, statement saying that, that we as a city want the, the, the homeowners' wishes or the agreed-upon, uh, items to be included, uh, for future, um, phases. And I understand that we're, that we won't be here and it needs to be approved separately, phase by phase, but we need to have this reference somewhere.
Sure. And, uh, to touch on that, uh, one of the concerns is being addressed. The preliminary plat itself is the guiding document for final plats. So in the preliminary plat, that road was moved over. It, it's no longer gonna be stubbed out through Tres Caballos. It's moved over to the east. So that's already, that's what they're gonna have to follow. That's what we base our recommendations for approval for a final plat, is on the preliminary plat. So if that changes from the preliminary plat to the future Phase Four, and it's not, that's not being followed, then it'd be recommendation, more than like the recommendation that's denied, since it's not following the original preliminary plat. There are other items potentially, uh, that I believe there were concerns from the, uh, constituents and the adjacent property owners to this subdivision. Uh, there are also some agreements that the city needs to get into with the developer as well, with that Phase Four development. Uh, that'd be forthcoming as well. So that's something we could potentially look into putting into writing, if that's what you're looking at.
I, I would like to have as much of this hammered out as possible. Uh, because we're talking about different phases, different councils, uh, different attitudes. And at this point, if we say that we're for the constituents, I think that we need to have something formalized in writing. That's just my opinion.
Mr. Rodriguez?
We already had meetings, okay?
I'm sorry, sir?
We already had meetings. What we're saying is, some of us are up for reelection in three years. Some of us are re-elected two years. You know, some of us are on three. What I'm saying is, we already had all these discussions. We already have all these agreements. How is it very difficult to do, to just have a document written and signed by every single party to say, "Just in case none of us get re-elected, and there's a new body here with a different mindset", we want something concrete? Because when we're doing just Phase One, by the time we get to Phase Four, that'd be five years from now. It's, it would be different looking up here. We want something for the, for the constituents that live there to know that we worked hard to have the conversations, to really hash out all of the agreements. We're not gonna leave it for faith. That's what we're trying to say. We don't want it on faith. We want something solid, something concrete, something signed. We already agreed on this. How is it so hard that we're still looking into it? No, we're not looking into it. The agreements were made. All parties agreed on it. I just need a document signed, and I totally agree with Mr. Perez. We need it signed. Saying that in the future Phase Four, all of the bells and whistles are here. That's it. That's it. We don't need to be talking about it. How hard is it to call the developer tomorrow and say, "Hey, you know what? Could we just have it in writing? Because that's what council wants." And when you get to Phase Four, we'll just have this document just to reassure us that all of the bells and whistles are there. It's not difficult. It's not difficult. I have contracts. I have one company, it's a billion-dollar contract. And believe me, all the bells and whistles are in those. I don't leave anything to chance. Give us a peace of mind. You know, we should be the good stewards. Just, just something in writing. That's all I'm asking.
Mr. Perez?
Um, as a follow-up, I understand that if we have something in writing, in the council that, 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 uh, comes after us can undo it. I mean, that's, that's the reality. They, they can undo it. But at least the homeowners will have, do, they will have a red flag or some kind of warning to come back and say, "Hey, wait a minute. You know, this is what we agreed upon." And that's all I'm saying, is that as much as possible, because again, I understand that any prev, any subsequent council can, can undo that, that agreement. I understand that. But in terms of there being sufficient notice to the homeowners, that any change has been decided by the council, they can, they have a, a fair chance of fighting for, fighting it. And so that's what I'd like to have, and have them be able to, some kind of leverage to, to defend themselves with.
A peace of mind. A peace of mind.
So then, uh, Madam Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and, uh, amend my motion, if I may, to approve the preliminary plat. Oh, no, this is not a preliminary plat.
Final plat.
The final plat with a, a, a statement, a conditional statement, um, stating that, um, and I apologize, I wasn't privy to the, to the agreements, you were, Mr. Rodriguez, so they can, they can tap on you for the, for those, uh, issues or specifics.
Yes.
But I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to include a statement, a conditional statement as to what was agreed upon for the, the residents of Rancho Miraval. And, um, so that there is, uh, an understanding of what will be in place for the fa-final phase of, is it Phase Five or Phase Four?
Four.
Phase Four.
Second.
Mayor, we have speakers.
Ferny Salcido?
Thank you very much, council. I appreciate what you're doing, Mr. Perez, Renee, Mr. Rodriguez. I think we're on the right track. We're all thinking about a contract that's gonna mature ten years from now. We need to have something in writing, what we agreed upon. We don't want any changes. You know, if, if they're gonna make a, a development and an investment, and we are requesting something, let's go ahead and make a contract, like you would a million-dollar contract. And I appreciate what you're saying, exactly. That's just all we're, we're looking for, for some protection, for some certainty. Something that we can, a backup, if you would. All right, and I realize we've, we've gone through three different councils in the last two and a half years, uh, different, uh, planning and zoning, uh, directors. Uh, it, it's been hard, and, and you guys can see where we're at. And I appreciate, maybe we should just get that in writing and then make a vote. Why do we need to approve that tonight? I don't think that we need to approve it tonight. I think we can extend it to more weeks. We've been here for two years. Let's get that in writing and then make a vote. Thank you so much for your time.
Does that affect our timeline? I, I don't, I, because I know that we have...
Yeah.
I know that we have a window of time in terms of the processes for approval and those kinds of things, and so I'm not sure.
From, from, uh, Mr. Perez, from the time the submission of a final plat that meets all the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, you have thirty days to approve or disapprove, if you don't, it's deemed approved.
Okay.
Um, on the other issue, I, I just, I feel that you should submit it for legal review. The contract that you're trying to do, it sounds to me like you wanna do a development agreement for future development. Um, the law does require that the current plat be approved, if it is in compliance with all the subdivision ordinance.
We can't...
But there are development agreements that can be done.
That's what I was gonna say, we can't treat it like a covenant of some sort?
I just don't know, like, make it a condition of approval of a different phase of the subdivision, if you will. If it's been a plat that's submitted and it's in compliance with the subdivision ordinance, that's what the, that's what is required. You're, you're asking about requirements for a different...
Right, right, no, no, I, I, yes, I appreciate that.
Which can be accomplished in a development agreement that's separate. I think we would have to look at it, you know, I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent on it, but that's, that's what I think right now.
And just for my own clarification, so then if, uh, the submission of, for approval of this final plat, if, if it is, and I'm just talking hypothetically, if it is not approved tonight, what are the ramifications for the developer if it's not approved tonight?
I'm sorry, so we can give you a better answer?
The final plat was submitted, uh, I believe, it was the middle of January when we received this. Uh, I'm sorry, no, end of January. So essentially, that thirty days were, were there, essentially, in order for it to be approved. Pardon me, actually. Um, no, because it went, it's actually February when we got it. So we're, we're right there at the thirty days, essentially.
So then, so then if, if, and so hypothetically, again, I'm not, I don't wanna say that we're, we voted one way or the other. Um, if the plat is not approved, then the developer has to resubmit everything for approval? Or the, or at this point, since they have met all of the conditions that have been imposed on them, uh, in, in terms of, of the, the planning process and the, and the final plat, what are the ramifications there, sir?
Yeah, I, I don't think they would have to resubmit. You could always approve it later, but the, the trigger date is not necessarily when it was handed in. I'll have to go back and read the subdivision ordinance. Every ordinance is different in terms of when it's accepted, it's completed, and meeting all the requirements. But at that point, thirty days, and what the statute says is, it has to be approved or disapproved by the authority that, that approves it, in this case for the City of Socorro, the city council, and other cities, can be the planning and zoning commission. If there's no action on it, it's deemed approved by operation of law.
By default, it's approved.
By default, that's correct. It's not deemed denied, it's deemed approved.
Okay, and then...
So, and I, and I don't know what the deadline is without reading the ordinance at this point.
Okay, and then so, uh, if it were not approved, then we would need to give justification as to why it was not approved, and give the developer those, the listing of, of why it was not approved, and they have to, so they can remedy those situations or those items?
If, if, yeah, if you're not going to approve it, it should be based on not complying with...
Some, some...
Some requirement of the subdivision ordinance.
Some things that have not been met in terms of...
And so forth, uh, yeah. So, but the development agreement that you wanna do, or that has been discussed tonight, which is there's certain requirements that will be part of Phase Two, Three, Four. That can be done, and it can be a separate item that we can look at. And we, and we have to look carefully at doing it, because there's an issue too with taking away discretion from future council to act on, on, on their, you know what I mean? There's a constitutional issue there.
Because we can't do some things in perpetuity. I understand that.
Yeah.
And so, but that's what I'm saying, is that, and, and we have, I've, I've already articulated that, that we cannot bind future councils on, on an agreement.
Correct.
Certainly. But if a change were to occur, as, as they're going through the phases of this development, then they can be aware of, of the, of those changes and say, "You know what? The previous council, we had come to this agreement." And so, at that point, whoever's sitting here can revisit that issue. And again, we can't control them, but at least there, that serves as a, as a, as a discussion point.
Correct. And with that, development agreement, the developer can be contractually obligated to submit the...
So...
The, the next final plat in conformity with the agreement. Mayor?
Mr. Rodriguez?
Uh, my question to you is, uh, could, could, would it be so difficult just to...
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Conrad Conde with Conde Incorporated, uh, actually representing the developer on this property. Like you stated very eloquently, we've agreed to do certain things. The first component was revising the preliminary plat, which is kinda like a land study, that's what we have to follow, to make sure there's no connections. We've done that. And that's why you approved the preliminary plat, based on that. The second component, which is coming forth next, is we even stated, "Hey, we're gonna do it in four phases." We know the concern is the fourth phase, 'cause that's the one that's closest to Rio Vista. Not Rio Vista, Rio, Rio Rancho. What we promised, and we're gonna continue with that promise, is that we will submit the developer participation agreement that has just been completed by the developer's attorney. The developer's reviewing it right now. Like we stated, we would submit that to you all before we recorded the first phase. So that would give you more than a year, if it takes us a year, to hash out an agreement between the city, the residents, and the developer, before we even go to Phase Two. We would not submit Unit Two until that developer participation agreement is approved by all. Then we figure a year should be more than adequate time to do that. And that's what we've committed to do, and that's what we're going to do.
Okay.
And once we receive it, we will get with the constituents so they can review it also?
Absolutely. We will send you a PDF, so that we can send it electronically. Perfect.
Mayor, I have one more speaker. Jesús Cabrera?
Thank you for, you know, the, the last option. That's what I was looking, for a paper. En español, se ha dicho que dice, las palabras se las lleva el viento. Papelito habla. Okay, if you guys are approving the first phase, they're gonna work, they're, they wanna start the development, they should redo that letter, even if you, you're gonna approve of that one, it's no problem. But they already got the whole drawing for the whole, for the whole subdivision. So they should redo that letter first, and then they can approve the, the la, the first phase they're gonna do, and then, and then, and then. They say, "Yeah, they wanna do it on the second phase." How do we know? Las palabras se las lleva el viento. So, I appreciate you can tell them, do the letter first, and you've been approved. It takes only less than a week to do the letter. We want two, three, four lawyers. That's all what it takes. You approve it, we got the letter, they got the first phase to start working. Because they already got approved, they already got the design, how they're gonna do this. Even if it's gonna pass in three, four, five years, the, the, the last area, we already got the paper since the beginning. Who knows? What's gonna happen tomorrow? Who knows? When a youth gonna die? I don't wanna say that. So, that's what I'm asking. The letter first. Thank you.
Mayor, those were all our speakers. Mr. Perez?
I don't know if procedurally we can actually request a letter first.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes, I, I agree. But we already heard that when we already did all of this, they already replanted it.
Yeah, right.
So it's already done. Your street's there, nobody's gonna touch it. It's already replanted, okay? The whole subdivision. But we, since we're gonna do it in phases, we're doing the first one from the big drawing that's already has all the changes. What he stated, and what, what, what we had talked about, what he's going to do is that we're, we're bound by rules. So he already, and we, on, on, on paper, which is, that's what he's gonna bring next time, which he already let us know. He's gonna bring it, he's gonna show it to all of us, we're all gonna agree, and then we'll do all the, the, uh, the, the contracts. Now, depending on how long the developers do the Section Four, um, uh, you know, it might be a different council, but at least we already have the document. And that's what we're, we're... And that's what we're, we're, we're looking for, that's what we're going to get, and, and, you know, I, I know that this has been for two years, three years, basically. I mean, I, but we're already here. I mean, we're, we're already at the finish line, we just have to cross it. And, and, and that's it. You know, like I said, and Mr. Perez already said, you know, we, we want a documentation too, so.
Mr. Conde, is it Mr. Conde?
Mr. Perez?
I'm sorry?
Go ahead.
What is, I'm sorry, Mr. Conde, the one representative, or the Conde developers?
Yes.
What is the turnaround time? Because you said that the, that the agreement is currently under review, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so what is the turnaround time for finalization of that, of that document?
I know the owner would prefer to submit the PDF of that for the city's review within the next two weeks.
Two weeks?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so then, that-
We can place an item on the agenda just to give you status.
I, and I think-
That way we don't lose track of it.
So then, at this time, I'd like to go ahead and maybe request that this be a standing item, until it gets-
And be, be put on every meeting.
On every agenda item, so that we don't lose focus, and then, and then we all are under the gun to, to get that done.
And Mayor and Council, can, we can even add one more thing for protection from you all. If you wanna put it as a comment of approval from this, of this final plat, is that we can't record Unit One until that development agreement is submitted to you all. You can put that as, as a requirement.
Okay, so then, at this-
That way you have assurance.
All right, so then, at this time, I would like to go ahead and amend my motion to approve the, the final plat with the condition that it cannot be submitted for recording until we have, until such time that we have
the agreement.
The agreement between-
Submitted to you all.
With the city, and the dev, and the developer?
Yes.
That has been discussed tonight. Yes?
Second.
All right.
Rene Rodriguez?
Aye.
Cesar Nevaras?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
Ivan Colombia Lobos, absent.
Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we're gonna take a short recess. Do we have a motion?
I'll have a, I make a motion to have a ten-minute recess?
Second.
Rene Rodriguez, absent. Cesar Nevaras?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
Ivan Colombia Lobos, absent. Eight seventeen, we're in recess.